Make us wait one.
Okay, we're recording.
Okay. Do you have anything to bring to our attention? This time?
I've got a hand on the mic.
Okay. All right. Proceed, please.
We are here tonight to hold a public hearing for a conditional rezoning. That is actually what we're doing. The property currently is P.O., designated Public Open Space, because it was... And currently is owned by the town of Blackstone. And the request before you tonight is a conditional rezoning to... Rezone it to the Business General District, okay, with conditions. And certainly, one of the conditions should be that it's used for the intended purpose. And BG is a fairly broad definition. But I think the town council, because the town council has advertised a public hearing and received input for the activity, and really, it's a restaurant and tasting house. Mr. McCormick is here to more fully flesh out the description there. But the town council did not hold its public hearings in order for it to be a gas station or some other type of use that's permitted in the BG. It was pretty specific to the restaurant and the tasting room, okay? And so, we're doing this tonight as advertised as a conditional rezoning, okay? And these are conditions that can either be proffered by the applicant or can be mandated, or I can't say mandated, but recommended by the planning commission, okay? And I think now is the time to kind of work out things and receive commentary in regards to the proposed tasting room and restaurant for the Old Town Shop, which is at 519 Church Street. There are some questions that I've heard about parking, okay? If you look at that survey that is enclosed in your packet... I can make copies for everybody if you'd like one. In fact, I think I have a bunch of your copy. I may not have enough for everybody. We may have to share a little bit. I'm filling your... And he should be in your planning commission back at the survey. If you look at this, and I'll describe it to you, this is the property that's intended to be sold, okay? This survey will be the description or associated with the description or the Schedule A in the deed for the transfer of the property, okay? If you can see, and the description in the advertisement is all of Lot 1 through 6, portions of Lots 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. So, it would be the frontage on Church Street of Lots 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. The town owns, in its entirety, lots 1 through 12, if you can see here, okay? This is the West Blackstone survey, so everything's a little chopped up 25-foot lots all in the whole neighborhood. So, it would be lots 1 through 6 in their entirety, and then portions of 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. The purpose of that is, and David can confirm, is I assume there would be some parking that would be built in that area? Do you have any other...
Next to the water tank?
For that half lots in front of the water tank?
Um, yeah, or just outdoor seating.
Seating or whatever, okay. There are no permanent improvements that you anticipate any time. But you can see Lot 2 is what the town would retain, and that's .22 of an acre. A little less than a quarter acre, and the town obviously needs to retain its water tank and a little hut that's associated with the water tank that maintains the controls. One other issue, and David and I have talked about, there are two easements that we would need to retain on the property. One is a water line easement that extends from the water tank, and it goes directly back to the Church Street right away. And the second is a water line that actually cuts the corner of Lots 2 through 6. And if you can see that, it's a proposed variable width utility easement. There is the line that goes to the tank from the concrete reservoir that sits on the other side of Church Street. So, we would need to retain easement. We don't need to retain ownership, just easement of those two portions of the property. And I don't think those interfere with long-term plans that Dave has. So, this is the actual survey that would be a portion of the deed, and the deed would describe this property. Any questions from anybody? Let me see, okay. If you look at the lease that the town has, or does not have but intends to have, and it would be executed at closing, and that is a lease for that portion of the town property, which is east of the concrete reservoir but west of the College Avenue right away. If you know where those holly trees are and antique lights, there's a little small parking lot because the town employees don't go over there anymore. They all go to the old hardware store. David's asked, and I think council will agree, if the transaction goes through, that the town would allow that to be used as parking, off-street parking for the facility. And again, it's a conditional rezoning. We're not asking to rezone the property next to the concrete reservoir to the west of College Avenue. The rezoning specifically would apply to the property that you see in the survey that we shared.
Can you give us a summary of BG zoning?
BG zoning is the town's most general commercial and retail and restaurant zoning district. Our downtown is zone BG. The predominance of Church Street.
What is Farm Bureau, for example?
I don't know. I think it's going to be BG, but I can get the map and tell you definitively. I'm going to say with 80% certainty that it's BG. Is the mini storage warehouses and the homefront, wayfront? Homefront? Homefront appliances, benchmark bank.
Existing commercial?
There is some existing commercial in that area.
Church Street is BG.
But it's also some mix, too. I mean, if you get further down Church Street, you've got residential. You've got multifamily there at Magnolia Place. You have residential on the Second Street side and Brunswick Avenue. So, it's a little bit of a mix, and that's why we advertise it as a conditional rezoning. So, if there were some need to address other items that either came as a result of the public hearing... Because if it were a straight BG, it would entitle Mr. McCormick and/or his assigns to any use by right in the BG district, which includes maybe some noxious things, movie theaters, or, you know, things that... Maybe late night, all those kinds of things. So, we did do it as a conditional rezoning so that both parties could find amenable conditions that everybody could live with, including the neighbors, if necessary. Questions? And I'd be happy to run in the back and get the map out and confirm what is and what isn't BG.
The parking lot that you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
You're selling that as well?
No, sir. That'll just be a lease. They're not intending to purchase it, and the fee simple ownership would not change. And the lease has not been executed. The lease will be executed if the deal is consummated. The lease would be executed at the time when the deed is transferred, and it would be a... And I've got a copy of it. But again, it's not executed, and it would be a multi-year lease they could use for off-street parking. The property doesn't lend itself for a lot of off-street parking, and we require every commercial or multifamily project to have an off-street parking component. And that was really one of the solutions to the issue, okay? I don't know. I think that may be something Mr. McCormick could address if he'd like, and if the planning commission would like for him to come forward.
I'd like to hear some, but generally about the project and plans for it.
All right, well, hello again. My name is Dave McCormick. I'm the owner of the Blackstone Lofts here at Second Lunenburg, and we just did a parking variance right next door to that just the other month. So, on this particular property, I've been looking at it for a really long time. We studied it for another grant that we were putting in front of the state that didn't come to pass years ago. And I think that it's a really... It's a neat building. It presents a lot of opportunity, but it certainly, you know, needs some ancillary things to happen for it to really be put into use and to monetize the space. So, I purposely didn't propose anything really specific here. We just wanted to get zoning that we could do what I would call multi-use. It's just, we want to do residential in the bigger part and some restaurant on the back end. And I run several breweries in the state. We have one in Petersburg called Trapezeum Brewing right now, which has been open about a year and a half. We just opened one in Beals, in Bedford, called Beals, up 460, same size. It's a production brewery. We employ about 40 people in each of those facilities. And the way that state law is written, we can open tasting rooms if you get a brewery license and open tasting rooms in what we call satellites around the state. So, we're starting to work on that now. We have one in Amherst County that's coming up next June in an old mill that we're converting to a hydro-powered brewery out there. This building will... We want to kind of do the same thing, different, of course, different aspects of a power source or anything like that in mind. But we want to use the industrial vibe of the space and cater to some of these folks coming to pick it and give them something to do in town. So, we kind of look at the restaurant piece as really a tasting room for the brewery. In terms of hours, we typically open at 4 and close at 10. That's a standard, and we do that like Wednesday through Saturday. On a Sunday, we close at 7. We don't operate anything till 2:00 in the morning or anything like that. It's not a bar. And then, we typically will...
Doesn't the state have fairly strict rules on what you can do in a tasting room? You can't serve anybody else's alcohol, is that right?
It depends what kind of ABC license you have. So, if you're a... If you're a... If you're not a brewery and just get a regular ABC license, then you run into some rules around your percent of food and beer. If you have a brewery license, none of that applies, as long as you are making the product. So, and then, you can get some kind of adjunct licenses on top of that to serve cider or wine or even alcohol if you want to. But that changes your designation. So, we don't intend to do that. We don't intend to make mixed drinks or anything like that. We just want to serve the beer that we make in the satellite facility. And then, we would typically, around that, like we do in some of these other places, serve... In Bedford, we serve barbecue. In Petersburg, we do brick oven pizza. We're just... So, here, we may do hamburgers, you know, but high-end, kind of something. We're just figuring that out now. So, but that's the restaurant brewery tasting room piece of the thing. And then, in the bigger building, I'm looking at residential, kind of like we were in the other building.
If I may very quickly, just to let you guys know, the residential piece will require yet another action on your part that we haven't advertised tonight. It would be a conditional use permit because established residential on first floor or second floor in the BG requires something. We're doing the rezoning tonight, which will allow the taproom as a restaurant, okay? And then, if you're going to do the residential, we'll come back and do that at some point. But town council has seen his concept for the taproom, and they've held a public hearing for that. And it would require another public hearing to do the residential. So, you know, and you guys know that we'll have yet another meeting this week.
What kind of occupancy limit would the tasting room or... I'm just trying to get an idea how large we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm... You know, I don't... Like in... They're all... Everything we do is kind of based on the size of the building, the number of bathrooms and things like that. So, you know, I would say it's under 100 in terms of... Will ultimately be under 100 in terms of the full occupancy of the thing. I think we do, in Bedford, we have an 80-place, and that's pretty big. So, it'd probably be less than that. I mean, you know, it might be 50 to 60. I don't want to really get too specific about the number because a lot is going to come out as we do code reviews and things like that, so.
The brewery or restaurant portion, are you speaking of the area where the garage building is now?
Yes, yes. And we...
And then, the residential would be in the old power plant portion?
Exactly. That's right. And when we talked about, you know, that grassy area near the water tower? You know, I think there's... To me, it's kind of a neat setting there, you know? It's kind of weird with the water tower and the grassy area. And I just kind of think of that as an outdoor place for just hanging out and having fun and doing events or whatever.
You actually being... Will you be doing any brewing on-site?
Yes. We'll have a small pilot system, they call it, there.
Really? I didn't know you were going to do it on-site. That's cool.
Yeah.
There's a couple of questions, and I think as far as venting or ventilation for brewing and all that, any kind of brick oven wood smoke, I think Ms. Russell's going to have a significant number of questions as far as with the exhaust. I don't know what a small package brewery... How do you exhaust that? Is there a filtering system or any of those kind of things? But I think the Russells are probably here because they have some questions about maybe to explain.
Well, let me tell you the process of what we do in a situation like that, and maybe that'll answer some questions. So, this is unlike a production brewery like we have in Petersburg or Bedford. We steam there and natural gas. That creates, you know, just waste steam and waste heat. Here, and in the one in Amherst, that's all electric. And that'll also have what's called a condenser on it. So, it really just, as any steam comes off of that thing, it condenses in a long tube and then just drains out of the system. So, we won't bring any steam or anything like that into this process. It's a... It's almost like, I know this may not, in context, make any sense, but like a... An amped-up home brewing system, you know? It's just, it's really like cooking on a stove at home. But it's just professional, so, in the way it's lined up. In big production facilities, crazy. I mean, huge building, huge tanks, huge everything. This will be a very small version of that.
But you'll heat with electricity, not with wood. It will not be a wood-based fire. It would be electric.
That's correct. And, you know, in terms of, we won't do pizza here, but we, you know, the way we do that in Petersburg, we vent through what's called a B-vent, which is an insulated vent, and, you know, flew out anything that's coming out of that oven. Here, we'll just use a standard restaurant food for any cooking.
And there'll be no wood involved in anything you cook?
No.
The wood fire grill, or whatever they call them? No.
Nope.
Just so you know, I think Ms. Russell had some concerns about wood smoke, and I think we've been through a couple of things.
Oh.
And I think that it turns to be what you said it was, and you were concerned about wood smoke or coal fire, any of those kinds of things.
Oh. Do you live in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Yeah, no, we don't. Anything... You know, we might cook with natural gas, was like normal, but there's no wood applications in this process at all.
No coal?
No.
No? No smoke, no extra smoke or anything?
No, not at all.
Because we have enough of that. So, where is your... Where did you say your location was that was similar to what you're planning to do here?
The one that we're planning... The one that is in construction right now is in Amherst County. The closest business we have like this is in Petersburg, but there again, much, much bigger facility there.
So, there's nothing that we can go to to see that would be on the same scale as what you're planning to do in Blackstone at this time?
I could point you to other businesses that do exactly what we're doing, and you could look at that.
I'd rather see your business.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I don't have one that I could show you right now.
When would the Amherst one be up?
In June.
In June, okay. When do you expect, if everything goes the way you're hoping, when do you expect for this one to be?
Probably the following June. So, this would probably be like June of '19, by the time we got everything planned and permitted.
So, if the business takes off and does well, which I hope it does, the parking lot that you're talking about with the town employees is part... I mean, it's not...
May not be big enough.
Be big enough, so...
But there may be enough room behind it that could be upgraded.
Like with Adam's parents, they're concerned about spillover running beside their lot. You know, right there beside their...
On-street parking? Maybe that's one of the things that we need to consider, that there not be on-street parking permitted maybe in that block, just to keep it from congesting with folks.
Right, and in no time, this building will have a dance floor and you change your plans later on and decide to want to have a DJ or a band or anything of that type?
I wouldn't rule out a band, but I am... If you want to put no dancing in or, you know, DJs or...
It's definitely different than downtown where, you know, you don't have people directly involved for a residential.
Yeah.
Just so everybody understands, a dance hall permit? We still have something described as a dance hall permit. A dance hall permit in Blackstone is if you have three things. You're drinking, okay? You've got dancing, and... Gosh, or something else, but...
A DJ.
A DJ, or music, or amplified music. You have to have a dance hall permit, whether they're dancing or there's a band. You can have those kinds of things single, but if you combine those three activities, then a conditional use permit for a dance hall will be required.
Oh. I mean, I'm sure I'm speaking for Adam's parents. I think the concern is, you know, if you do that, bringing a big crowd of people right to the side of residential area as opposed to it being down on Main Street. And that's why, you know, it's a big difference between you saying, you know, we're going to run from 2 to 10, and now it's gone from, well, two years ago, you said it was going to run until 10, and now you got to dance in the neighborhood until 12:00, 1:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Ms. Russell has a big point. I mean, you know, this isn't just the brewing business, but restaurant or anything. You know, we run lots of businesses like this, and we typically, you know, cater to a little bit of an older crowd, a little folks with a few more dollars. We don't serve $3 Budweisers in there. You know, you got to have... You got to be... It's a little more... I'm not going to call it like upscale, but... So, we're not looking to have big, crazy parties. It's not the idea. It's a socializing thing. We want to... That's why we don't stay open till 2. We're not looking for people to get drunk, and it's not that kind of place. You know, we're trying to have fun, create something to do in town. We run lots of businesses right in the middle of our residential areas. So, we're very sensitive to that. That's, in fact, that's how the Bedford Brewery is. It's a... It's a large production facility right in the middle of a neighborhood. So, very sensitive of those issues. You know, very open to, you know, we need to get something into, you know...
That's great. I'm wishing you great success, but at the same time, you know, there've been businesses in town before that started like that.
I believe it, yeah.
Now, with that being said, so when you do have situations like that or functions like that, is that something where you're going to be able to provide security in your place?
No, we would not do that.
What kind of a dance you were talking about around the water tower? What kind of a dance were you talking about?
So, if we were to have, you know, let's say we had a band. The typical bands that we would have would be like a three-piece bluegrass band, you know, pretty chill. We don't do big rock and roll amplified stuff. It's just, we want to have fun. We want to have stuff for people to do. We've had things like at the brewery where we'll do a cornhole tournament. That's a good example of one. We do things where, you know, we do stuff for kids, where they come out. Like we did alpacas this weekend at the brewery in Bedford, and that was great. So, people who come to these places have families, you know? We realize about 60% of our customers at these breweries are families. So, they bring their kids, and we bring alpacas. And that's a cool place to do that, you know?
My concern is, I'm 20 feet from there. You know, when I'm in my backyard, I'm 20 feet from where you're going to be doing it. Is there going to be any kind of noise barrier or people there?
We are...
No.
What he will be obligated to do is part of our zoning laws in the BG district, whenever you have bought a residential district, it doesn't have to be a barrier. And when I say a barrier, it's got to be six foot tall. I don't know if that's a sound barrier, but there's got to be a separation between the residential and the business. Goodwill or...
So, there will or there won't?
There will.
Okay.
That is the BG district. So, we're going to have to either build a board fence six feet tall. You're going to have to find some bushes or something.
Well, I just want to make sure, like, this whole idea of an acoustic barrier is very different.
That's not required. A security barrier, I think, or just a separation for people entering someone else's property. It can be an evergreen bush. If you guys pay any attention to the Wilma Rutledge event that we went to a while ago? Yeah, that was in the paperback before. If you go look at it now, it's a vinyl fence, six foot tall, between her property and Dedon's property. So, it is a barrier, but I'm certain that you'll still be able to hear somebody talk.
But there's something there.
There will be something. It is obligatory, to our orders, that there be something between anything's own business or reason for business and the residential adjoining.
How many tenants do you suppose you would have?
I... I'm... You know, we haven't laid it out, but, you know, 20, maybe something like that.
So, it seems to me that he's got to be concerned about his own tenants also if he's...
Yeah.
Yeah. 20 tenants and you get possibly 20 vehicles using parking space.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a business like that barbecue place, and that one actually does open till a little later. It closes at midnight. And we have 10 people living above that. And so, you know, we do have to be really... And they're very, you know, high credit-worthy tenants, and we need to be really sensitive to their, to the quality of life. And, you know, at the end of the day, for me as the business owner, nothing is more beneficial to business on both ends, in terms of our stability, tenants, happy neighbors and everything, to being, you know, good business that's respectful of everything that's going on. I think that's really important.
If we need to have more parking space, remember, the property that's being proposed for the lease goes from College Avenue, not just that parking space, but it'll go down, you know, where the driveway is just before you put on concrete tank? That, if you look at the description of the lease, it goes that far. So, more parking space...
It can be extended.
The property's already there, just do you want to put gravel in there? And if we need to do something like your daily, so they can just park it.
I think it's a strong possibility because if it's going to be 20-plus tenants, then, you know... Which if everything stays like you say is going to stay, I wish it must have looked. I think it's just concerns of disruption to the parking.
Just so you know, too, it's the town's intention, and I don't know if y'all know this, but it's the town's intention within the next year to abandon that water concrete tank. The top of it, as you can tell, is in bad shape.
And when you say abandon, are we just going to abandon or move it? Get it out of the...
We abandoned initially, cut it off, but ultimately, we're going to have to tear it down. And it's just really daunting because trust the ground.
How deep does it go into the ground?
That's not that deep. I've got the report in my office, and believe it or not, it's probably six feet, seven feet. It's a million gallons of water going in that thing. But if you guys recall, we've had some problems with back tea test here in town because we stopped chlorine the area. We used to add chlorine right there at the tank. We're no longer allowed to by health department rules to add chlorine. So, we only added tree plants as our residuals aren't good. So, one of the things we've got to do is take off some of the storage. And that's a million gallons of storage that's sitting there, and the water's getting old. So, what's the ultimate use of that building or that concrete tank? I don't know. Do I think it will stay there? Probably not. But I can tell you, if it was built during World War II, you know, was anything like Wrigley's War Stadium when we tore that down? That jigger was solid, man. I can tell you, we struggled to tear it down. So, I'm sure, you know, it takes some doing, but it's really not that deep in the ground.
We don't want to be put in the same place again or...
No, we don't. In fact, we're going to abandon. I say abandon, we're going to cut it off, and what ultimately happens with it, I don't know. But we're actually cutting off one of the tanks that Pickett is with. Believe it or not, one of those tanks that we're dedicating. Well, they're painted orange and white now because of the airfield. If you go through the main gate off of Route 40, there's a water tank here right there. Actually, we cut off this one, too. We're taking a million and a half gallons off, and that's going to freshen our water and the chlorine residuals will get better, so. But yes, that property down the driveway could be used for...
Sounds like one of the major concerns is the hours of operation. Would you agree to setting a timeframe, not on the front end in the afternoon, but a night timeframe that y'all would shut down?
As long as it's 10:00, yeah, that would be fine.
10:00 be okay with you?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do anyway. I wouldn't want to open anything later than that.
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable, okay? I wanted some ideas to make sure. Can we get that into the conditional use for 10:00?
Is that a conditional use being a conditional rezoning? These will be conditional.
I mean, can we get that into it? Okay.
I wonder if all of you sitting up here would like to have a brewery in your neighborhood. I frankly don't want one. Why can't we keep the alcohol down hand? I frankly don't want one, why can't we keep the alcohol down hand?
Why we need alcohol?
Well, I appreciate the thought, and I, and I think you have a valid point, there's no question. The only, and the question I would have is, and I'm like you are, I don't want people going up and down the streets there after they've had too much to drink either, because I think that's obviously extremely risky. But I do think that's a blight in that particular area, I do think that that particular building does hurt the residential area too, I think something needs to be done with that facility.
I have, um, I've been to Dave's place in Petersburg, um, it's, it's extremely nice. I call it extremely upscale because it brings in more of a, um, a middle-aged affluent crowd when I was there. Um, didn't mean it was alcohol everywhere, actually, I think I had pizza there, and it was delicious. It's a nice establishment, I look at this a little bit more like an Arm Roosters. Arm Roosters was there in the neighborhood and was a very good neighbor. Um, did we have parking issues there? We probably did, we were on Main Street, I mean, on church, but I don't see this as a, a drunken stupor, in fact, I see it cleaning that up a little bit, because I see a lot of residual from what the drinkers are doing at night, when I run by there, I see the remnants of that. If you've got residents there of nice families or young couples, and you have a nice establishment where you're gonna have a hamburger, you have a beer, I don't care, I just see that it's, it's bringing that neighborhood up from the vagabonds that are using that building right now. That's my personal, so, would I want a brewery beside me? Um, I have no problem with Dave's place in Petersburg, now, do I want a business beside me? Maybe not, but I don't have, if, if it were like the one in Petersburg, I enjoyed it thoroughly, and it was very controlled, and it was actually a very pretty location, a lot prettier than locations that are not kept up as far as homes. That's my opinion with it.
Well, we have a quiet neighborhood now, I mean, it's quiet, and yet it's not, we've got the, uh, Church Street traffic, we've got the train, and the, um, um, fire station, and the rescue squad, so, that's noisy, and you get used to this, but, um, I, I don't know what the sort of the doing, I just, Mr. McCormick, you've done a beautiful job with the warehouse layout across from it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to like the traffic there, but that's been okay, and it was a very nice apartment. I'd just like to keep it.
Sorry?
So thank you, one of my daughters too, is a boss.
Oh, good, that's great.
There's a, there's a similar type of establishment in Farmville now, and I think they've taken an old industrial building and created, and it's, and it's, I think it's made the area nicer.
It really makes it prettier.
Isn't that the old Wayanup Hotel or something?
Yeah.
Just up, up the street a little bit.
The, um, breweries that we have observed, not, we haven't gone in, um, this past summer, we're down in, um, Virginia Beach, and we didn't go in, so we didn't see anybody inside, but there were families outside. There were really pretty lights, and families were playing cornhole, and, you know, I thought, well, maybe I wouldn't, if I drank, maybe I wouldn't take my child to somewhere while I was drinking, but the kids, you know, were playing kitty cornhole, and things like that, and, of course, they weren't making a lot of noise, we didn't get out, and go closer. And I observed the one in Farmville, but I only saw like a, a small place for them to come out, you know, but, um, you know, but my concern is for Adam and his parents, who are right there, right at you, like he said, twenty feet away, we're across the street, he would sort of be in our backyard, or sort of, um.
We, we do have, so, I don't know if this soothes the concern, but there is a noise ordinance in town, and we do have some standards.
Right.
Okay, it's hard to catch them in a car when they're driving down the highway, it's a whole lot easier to have a fixed and set location than being noxious.
Well, I think if it stays like he said, then I think it'll be fine.
I mean, I like the lights, by the way, I like seeing families together, and things like that, you know.
It is a real asshole.
Noise and late hours, and, there's an alley, you know about the alley, here, my home, my man. There is an alley right beside, or, or in the middle, or whatever you, wherever you're planning to purchase, and that alley goes right on across Brunswick, and people are drunk in the alley, they talk so nasty in the alley, I'm only, there's one house separating us from the alley. And now they do all kinds of things in the alley, so.
I think this will, will help.
You're gonna have that van and Dylan there as a traffic resource, you know, with Mr. McCormick's venture, and I think he might.
It might help it, you know?
Well, you know, and I tell you, I, I lived on, uh, Gray Street in Richmond, in the worst times, you know, I, and I, right on, uh, in, in my backyard was a couple of bars, and people would come up and urinate on my, my house, you know, and all this stuff. So I get it, I totally understand what you're saying, and, uh, you know, I, I kind of look at this as, um, you know, it, from a bigger picture standpoint, you know, the quality of life in Blackstone is kind of what, what I'm thinking about here when I'm impl, trying to implement something like this, and getting away from that idea of just, just kind of redneck drunkenness, and actually thinking about something that, uh, will promote quality of life here, and it'd be something to do at night, and we don't have to do all that, we can just have a good time till nine o'clock, ten o'clock, get something really great to eat, and be proud of where we live, that's really what I'm after. Um, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm a big proponent of preservation and history, and I love that building, it doesn't look like a whole lot from the outside, but it's really cool in there, you know, it's got those arches and everything, so I kind of think about the building, and then what could be from, from the inside out, and, and I think, um, you know, breweries are a great economic development tool, and I hope that one day this will be a catalyzing project for the next thing that comes along, people see, just like in Petersburg, where they say, I never even thought something like this could work, and now that it is, businesses are popping up all over the place, so, um, you know, it's, it's not really, it's not intended to create drunks, it's intended to create community, and that's a really important distinction about what it is that I do versus what a bar does down, down the street.
Um, Miss Hugan, I understand your concern, but I'd rather see a brewery than to see a whole bunch of kids smoking pot and.
And that old building.
Yeah.
I'm wrong about that, that's why I have a sister kill my duck for hours, so.
That's, I, well, I hate hearing that, you know, and.
That's my position there.
But I do have another question about lighting, um, well, Pet Pete from the town, I know, we have a new, some new light bulbs that are really super bright, I used to get sit at my kitchen table when I have coffee in the morning, but ever since they started replacing some of the bulbs, um, the one behind, you have the storage building on True Street, was it called U Store, Drink Holes? That light is so bright, I have to keep, everything closed, coming up the road sometimes at night, it's blinding you, I'm just wondering what kind of lighting?
Yeah, it's amazing how insensitive neighbors can be about something like that.
I agree with Betty though.
So what, what I, you know, what I do, like in Petersburg, we, instead of having these harsh lights that go, we hung string lights, and it's very pretty, it creates a really cool.
It's a nice outdoor space.
Yeah, or that everything do right there where you are, so my yard.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you have to create enough light for people to be safe, but, um, we're not, we're very sensitive about the design of all of these things, and they all ultimately, um, kind of reflect on our brand, and it's what we're trying to promote, so if we go out there and have some crazy harsh light, or play loud music, it just, that's not what we do, you know, so, we wanna create a really cool atmosphere, something that's fun, relaxing, and, um, you know, just enjoyable.
I have a hundred-year-old Victorian house right there, right on the corner of Second and Times Square. Went by for thirty-five years to keep it, Victoria keep it its period of time, and, you know, so.
I, I hope what we're doing helps increase the value of that property.
That's what we need as a whole. There's a lot of rail around there right now that's bringing us down, so we do need the help, that's.
I hear you.
Some of these people, um, think of this as a shop, I think of it as an ice plant. But when they refer to Russian, we get ice.
You know, I was talking to Billy's dad, and he was telling me when those, um, generators used to run in there, and the noise, and the smoke that would come out of that building, it's eye-opening, so thank God that's not happening.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
From what I've heard, it's appropriate to have the conditions, if, if approved, certainly for the hours of operation, not to exceed ten o'clock. It's agreeable to the, to the applicant. Second item that I would think, is the on-street parking, I think that's got some merit. Maybe that we put a condition that, that it'll be off-street parking for his patrons, okay? You don't want somebody parking in front of him, or taking up the block, and pay his house, or.
Mostly concerned about on College.
And we'll say, College Avenue, that already does, be no off-street parking on College Avenue, that's agreeable to you guys, and that's just that one block that runs from church to Second Street, and his, his parents live right there, and so you don't have a roadcar right next to their house, and all that sort of thing. Is that would be agreeable to you, Dave?
I, I don't have any problem with that.
There'd be no off-street, or on-street parking on College, um, between church and Second, at the hours of operation.
Is that parking over there across college on the?
I think that will be a, a largeable place where the predominance of the parking will be. Behind the farmer's market, yes, ma'am.
Behind, oh.
Not, not on the college, or the Church Street side, but from the alley to Second Street.
With that great big water tank, it, I don't know.
The concrete water tank, yeah, it, it would have to be graded off, it would put a appreciable number of more, uh, parking spaces, but I think there is a, maybe half again bigger than this room, location we can put the parking space.
The parking space, is that the town did that, or did that be yours?
No, the upgrade would be, be Dave, if he wanted to do it, I think the town would reserve the right if they wanted to partner in any kind of way with him, but I think if he were gonna expand the parking lot, I think that the, the lease is as is right now, and the maintenance of the parking lot, not the maintenance of the bushes, and the maintenance of the, the anti-glax, that's still were made with the town. But on the parking lot, we wanna keep the bushes, and we wanna save them, but an appreciable expansion of the lot, and I think council would reserve the right to work with Dave, but I think at this point, I don't think there's an agreement or anything that's been hashed out between Dave and the, and the town, and where it's been cautious.
Go back to all anti-glax, do you remember the one at U Store?
No, those are LED lights, there's probably done, they've gone from standard.
They're horrible, they absolutely horrible ones.
They were on.
Well, I don't care, I'll pay for the two.
How many parking spaces do you think will be over there?
I think if we look at our town's ordinances, a restaurant has a, has a set number, just like an apartment, we're probably gonna have to find out from Dave, ultimately, how many units he's intending, and I think we still have time, because I think Dave's gonna be coming back to us for the multifamily component, so we'll have another public hearing, I'm sure, and when we do that, then we'll know actual, full square, square footage, because I think the parking for the restaurant are based on square footage, and/or number of seats, and I don't think we have that detailed just yet, okay? If they're gonna do the apartments upstairs, I can say it's.
Two per?
That's, that's the, the standard, that's the bellwether, that we use is two per unit, and, um, the board zoning field did give Dave a variance of one and a half, I think for the lofts, and we haven't seen a problem with that, specifically, I think, because you have one-bedroom apartments, when you start getting into two and three-bedroom apartments, I do think that the, the parking can be a little different, but if you go to the loft, I think that's predominance of one bedroom, and the new project Dave, considering he's also one.
What about the underground parking there?
In that, uh, United States, like, they, the Quonset Hut style building, what are you proposing to do with that?
You know, I don't even know yet, we're still figuring that out, it's still crazy.
It's a my receipt parking place.
Yeah, that's the only, to make it a real code complaint, you have to have turnarounds, and drive aisles, and all that, it's, makes it really tough to use a space like that.
I will tell you, there's one thing that the town is going to have to do, is when we did our sewer project thirty, forty years ago, and we destroyed your neighborhood, and the streets and everything, we disconnected the basement drain of that building from the sewer, so what we've been doing is something out the basement, every three weeks, or a month, if we get a big rain especially, and we gotta reconnect it to the, so DEQ wants us to reconnect, I made the decision to disconnect it, because we didn't want groundwater, or roof drains, or anything tied to it, and DEQ's come back to us, and our consultant with cornerstone engineering that helped us get all the tanks out of the ground, said, you need to put that floor drain back into the sewer, so we'll be probably digging up the street at some point, or. But that is some of the town we just need to do before we transfer the property, or as part of the transfer of property.
All right, so the conditions will.
I think those are at least two that I heard of.
Will be the.
Roosters.
Hours of operation, and requiring off-street parking.
No on-street parking in that.
Yeah, oh, no on-street parking on College.
And, uh, again, the apartments are not approved by this action, this is a restaurant BG, we're gonna be coming back to the apartments, and Dave will give a little more of a plan, again, the number of units, and the parking will be dictated, not only by the number of seats, but also by the number of units, that will dictate that, okay?
All right. Any further discussion? Tom, it looks like you're pondering a motion.
Very quickly, just so you know, before you do it, I don't know if these necessarily need to be included in your action, but there are, there is an addendum between Dave and our Walker Shop Development, and the town, for the purchase of the property, and there were some conditions that were included in there, and, you know, the town has an obligation to help him receive a bona fide letter from DEQ stating that the, the property can be used for intended purpose. The previous buyers, CCP Holdings, received that letter, I don't know if you've gotten that yet, but I think it's, it's imminently doable, just so you know, we've taken all the underground storage tanks, you may have seen all that digging, and, and nests, and knocking the walls down, we took out two underground storage tanks that were in terrible shape, that were outside that courtyard on the college side, two tanks came out of there, we sampled, we, and there is still some, some stuff, okay, there is still stuff, but it's stuff, because we have a potable water system, that DEQ is still satisfied that, that he can do the activity, I don't think DEQ would let him drill a well on the property for drinking water, okay? Because there is still some free, free product there, is it bad enough that it can't be used for residential? No, is it bad enough that it can't be used for a restaurant or cat house? No. But I think it's bad enough that if that was a sole drinking water source, I think the health department, DEQ would probably take exception, okay? So we did get those out, we're obligated to do that, and the last item in this addendum, it's public information, something like a copy, says purchasers shall not use the property owned by the town, nor shall it in any way encourage patrons to use any property owned by the town in Blackstone on the property, not the lease for across the street, specifically, we don't want people climbing on the water tank, you don't wanna be there, and, so there's gonna have to be some barrier, and it says purchasers shall not place tables and chairs on or around the Blackstone water tank, and that's on the town's property, if you look at that survey, we're retaining that little quarter acre piece, so I think there's gonna have to be some kind of a barrier or something, I don't really take hold of it. And I don't know if you want chain link, because that's the kind of vibe he's looking for, or whatever, but I think we have a, a barrier that we need to do, so we don't end up with somebody on the tank, if you have those kind of questions, but that is addressed in an addendum to the contract between the town and, and Dave.
Should we incorporate any requirements under that contract addendum?
And the town is not obligated to provide any grant money for David under this thing, I know that was a sore spot at one time, but the town is gonna participate and try to help facilitate, but I think what the town doesn't wanna do is get in a situation where it's obligated to pay back any grants, and that's part of the deal, I know y'all had some concerns about that last time, but that's written in the document.
Well, the alley, alley will stay there, right?
The alley will stay there, the property that Dave's purchasing is on his side of the alley, and logically, and I don't know Dave's long-term plans, if he wants to use the alley for access, but logically, you have to put up a fence, or some shrub, or something, and go on your property, not your property, but the property that the town is selling today, which is on the opposite side of the alley, um, I really haven't seen a development plan from you, if you're intending to use the alley as an access point in or out, but certainly the town needs to have access to that alley, going to get the water tanks, and we don't have to go through the middle of the property, so it needs to remain as a public access or a public alley.
Yeah, I, I plan to leave it open, but not really, like, it's not a primary access point or.
We need to have the ability for the town to use it, because we're gonna lose the access to the, to the infrastructure now. Garbage truck, yeah, I want to be on attention that it would stay for the, the intended purposes that are there now.
What's happened to the house on the corner there with Sears guys, is that vacant?
Is that the Sears house, he said? I don't know, I know it was sold at one time, and Johnsons lived there, and, and. They moved out, I don't know, I don't know, no one's, I don't have any indication that it's been closed, sold, I don't see a real estate sign, I don't see stickers on the windows, like you did with that, so, I'll turn back these, and I'll stop talking.
And you were saying, Tom. And you were saying, Tom.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and give the conditional resounding to BG on that property with the conditions that we've already stated.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are you abstaining?
Yes.
All right, any further business?
No further business, thank you.
And we will adjourn.
Thank you all, thank you for your input, everybody.